Welcome to our work session on restorative justice. We are looking forward to a presentation from the District Attorney's Office this afternoon. So Sarah, do you have any opening remarks before we turn it over to the District Attorney?
Yes, thank you everyone for being here today. Just as a reminder, these sessions are for informational purposes only, and no action can be taken in a work session. And with that, I will turn it over to our District Attorney Suzanne Valdez.
There we go. All right. Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you Commissioner Portillo for giving me the floor. I just want to actually give the floor soon to Lyle Seager, who is going to be talking to the Commission about restorative justice. And I just want to give a warm, I guess, introduction and let you know kind of where the District Attorney's Office is on restorative justice and our excitement for this project, I think, to go forward. So last year in 2020, the past administration in the District Attorney's Office convened a community forum to talk about restorative justice practices. And essentially what that means, I guess, in our space for criminal justice and what our office sort of looks at it in terms of as a definition is the ability to convene the offender who may have committed a criminal act with a victim or victims with the hopes through a facilitator, usually a trained mediator, someone who is very well versed in bringing individuals together to come up with solutions, together to talk about the act, to talk about how it may have affected the victim or victims, and somehow perhaps restore them into the community so that we can reduce our criminal justice footprint. And we hope that the individual who is held, can be held accountable, the person who committed the act and the victim can come together and move forward. So that discussion was held last year in July, I believe, virtually because of COVID. There was a lot of community interest through the Zoom program that was put together by then DA Charles Branson. I was part of that discussion, or I guess participated because I was very interested in the practice itself. And so fast forward to where we're at today. One of the issues, or I guess thoughts that I had is we were thinking about restorative justice, which was very important, certainly to my administration, was the need to have a community foundation for it. Back a year ago, the program itself in terms of educating the community about restorative justice was kind of put together by a couple of different outside organizations. And when I say outside, outside Douglas County, KIPCor, and I believe it was the Center for Mediation and Conflict Resolution out of Kansas City, were the main facilitators of the program that was held virtually last summer. And so fast forward to where we're at now, present day, I've had continued conversations, not very many conversations, but some with KIPCor and certainly with Lyle Seager, Verdel Taylor, and Lisa Larson, who have been the primary individuals within our community, very strong community advocates, community servants here in Douglas County, who have put together their own organization called Building Peace. And they've essentially taken, they're trained mediators, and I'll let Lyle talk about that. But they've taken the training, if you will, from KIPCor and the Center for Mediation and Conflict Resolution, and put together a local organization. And that really makes me quite happy because I, again, I really believe that if we're going to support programs and we're going to work with our, the individuals in our community who are, and can become a community, part of the criminal justice system, that the only way that we will have success is if we have programs within our community that are supported by our community. And I feel like that's where we're at. I'm very excited about their, their new organization and their plans. So I'm going to turn it over to Lyle. What I will tell you is from the District Attorney's perspective in our office, we would like to see restorative justice practices begin with our juvenile offender population. The reason for that is that we have much more flexibility with charging and certainly the timeframe within which to decide whether, how a juvenile will, will, or if, or will the, if the juvenile will go through the, through the criminal justice system. So a lot more flexibility in the law. So that's definitely a plus. Second, we want to certainly reduce the high school to prison pipeline by, again, if doing anything we can to ensure that an individual, a young, a young human being can, can be accountable if need be and, again, be, be allowed to be, remain in the community without any sort of criminal justice footprint. And then what we're going to see here through, I think, the presentation that you'll see today is that it really reduces recidivism. So plus, so the offender, I think, benefits, plus the community benefits, and I really think it's a win-win. So we've had a few meetings with Building Peace at the DA's office, and I think at this point, we're ready to move forward. And I'm just going to let the experts talk about how this is all going to work. And we're just here to provide moral support and to answer any questions that the Commission may have. So unless there's anything at this point, I'll go ahead and invite Lyle to come and chat with you.
My name is Lyle Seager, and I am so honored that we're here today to be a part of this program at the initiative of the District Attorney. We have been working on restorative justice in many areas across the state of Kansas. And Lisa has a presentation to share with you to give you more information. In 2020, there were 289 restorative justice community projects for victim and offender programs across the nation. And we're excited about the possibility of being one of those communities that join that growing number of options from the traditional judicial system. We also are a part of a community where over the last two years plus, our Lawrence Public Schools has been engaged in restorative practices and training teachers and staff and students as well and how to be restorative. So this program coming in now at this time really, really rides on the shirt tails of those, those programs that have already been started here in the community and will only enhance the way our community functions and operates in a more peaceful way. So I want to introduce, probably not an introduction necessary, but Lisa Larson is a very important part of our organization as well. Lisa's going to give you a presentation.
Good afternoon. This is a different position, isn't it, for me? It's, it really is an honor to be here. And I just want to make it real clear. I'm not here representing the city at all. I am here representing as a, as a member of Building Peace. So I've got a slideshow. I can, she set this up real easy for me, and I hope I don't screw it up. I share the screen. Oh, okay. I see. Yeah, that's right. She told me that. Okay, there we go. There we go. There we go. We'll start with that. So on behalf of Building Peace, we want to thank you for this opportunity to come before you today. Like I said, it is a true honor to be here. So the idea for a framework to bring restorative justice to our community and into the justice system, into our neighborhoods, as well as, like I said, our community, it's been on the minds of many in Douglas County for quite some time. You know, and this is evident by the in-depth conversations that have been occurring across many platforms in our community and the programs that have been initiated and supported by, throughout the community, as well as the Commissioners yourself. And we really appreciate that. So it's been these conversations that, along with experiences working in other counties across Kansas, that our Acting Director Lyle Seager began the process of starting the Center for Mediation and Conflict Resolution, known as Building Peace. So Building Peace was started in December of 2020. And since then, we built an organization that we believe is well positioned to provide mediation. Let me get on the next slide here. There we go. Provide mediation and conflict resolution opportunities using restorative practices that not only strengthen the community trust, but also provide security. And we, this is all done by, in, in upholding the dignity of all persons. So we bring together a dedicated group of Kansas Supreme Court-approved mediators. We, with experience as well as professional backgrounds that show that not only we're invested and committed to our community, but we're also rooted in training of restorative practices. And our team members come with extensive mediation experience and strong business backgrounds, as well as legal ethics. And I'll go over who our team is. We consist of five mediators. We have our attorney, David Trevino, Business Manager Natalia Fairchild, as well as our Grant Writer Melissa Nolte. And Melissa's out in the, the audience with us today. So I'll just briefly go over some of our experience. Lyle Seager, he's a retired pastor. He has a graduate certificate in restorative justice. He is a mediator for conflict resolution in the Kansas City metro area, also a domestic mediator for the Douglas County Courts. And he conducts parent adolescent mediation across the board, and he is also mentor mediator. Nancy Kelly, who is also with us out here today, she works in the Victim Offender Program in Shawnee County and done restorative practices at the Shawnee County School Systems, system, and is also a parent youth facilitator in Windock County. She's done work with seated, seated at the table in Shawnee County, and she's also the current coordinator for the Douglas County Small Claims Court. Verdel Taylor, he's retired pastor. We all know Verdel. He's a manager of diversity and inclusion at Lawrence LMH Health. He's a pastoral council at the Christian Psychological Services, Vice Chair of the Douglas County Health Board, as well as he specializes in domestic and faith, faith-based mediation. Dave Mathis, who is also with us today, he's a retired business executive. He's a victim. He run, he works in the Victim Offender Ministries in Newton, Kansas, which is Harvey County, and also with the Topeka Center for Peace and Justice. He is also a parent adolescent mediator. He's a mentor mediator, and he does volunteer for the Douglas, as well as the Johnson County Courts in small claims. Myself, I am, I've worked in civil, as well as small claims mediation. I've done volunteer work as, in Johnson, as well as the Douglas County Courts. I work on landlord tenant mediations, and I also work with neighborhoods in conflict resolution. And I also have business, extensive business experience based on my past. So that's who we are in a nutshell. So our experience team, what, our goal is to focus on using best practices as well as proven models to provide victim offender dialogue, to work with landlord mediation, landlord tenant mediation, on conflict in the neighborhoods. We're well-versed in neighborhood accountability boards, which are really important in a community. And we're also well-versed in facilitating community conversations on subjects that are often difficult to talk about. In addition to our own experiences, we also collaborate with established restorative justice organizations to bring training programs that provide the opportunity for community members to engage in the restorative practice process. So our experience with members of our team, we've worked throughout district courts, as well as social service restorative justice programs in Harvey County, Johnson County, Celine County, Shawnee County, Windock County, as well as the Kansas City metro area. All of these counties have, have very successful restorative justice programs. And it is our belief that it's time that justice, that Douglas County has that program to claim of its own. So our goal, so we see a very good fit for our services in the District Attorney's Office in the area of victim offender. Our team has worked with models in other counties that are specifically designed to use restorative practices in these very situations. It is especially successful with cases that involve juvenile offenders and low-level criminal offenses. It really affords the opportunity, and I think Suzanne kind of talked about this a little bit, affords the opportunity for some of our youngest community members to learn how their actions impact victims, as well as the community. It also provides a platform for the victim to hear from the offender and learn from them what caused them to take that action. These acts alone have been shown to promote healing, understanding, and it can remove the punitive aspect of the criminal justice system. We also see a good fit in landlord tenant mediation cases. Given the anticipated rise in landlord tenant cases due to COVID, it would be a good opportunity to provide these mediation services before a court case is filed. So that's us, Building Peace. We stand for questions. And Lyle is available to talk more in depth about the program on November 18th. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Lisa. So we are looking forward to a community event on November 18th, similar to what we had had back in July of 2020, under the previous administration of Charles Branson. It's a way to introduce, reintroduce restorative justice to the community and have a, we're going to be having some breakout sessions and actually utilizing restorative practices. People have a chance to see what it would be like to be in a circle where everybody is equally listened to and be able to speak from the heart. And we're anticipating then also that there's going to be more additional training for people who want to be actively involved in a victim offender program, which is direct victim and offender dialogue together, along with their support people. There's special training involved in that, and we're going to be incorporating certified trainers that through KIPCor out of Bethel College in North Newton, Kansas. And then there is a neighborhood, community accountability training that we'll be offering that deals are particularly cases like in shoplifting, where it's not only the, the harm has come to this place that had their goods lifted, but it involves the community as well. If a police car is sitting out in front, people may not want to come in, and the person who actually does the shoplifting may not understand that it's not just a minor piece of good that they're taking, but it really impacts a lot of people. And so there's a special training for people to sit in on victim offender panel or on neighborhood accountability panels. And the Center for Conflict Resolution, who does this all the time for Kansas City, Kansas and Missouri Courts, they'll be providing that training in January, we hope, as well. So those are the two kind of tracks that we're going to be following. And depending upon what else comes up, we're going to be prepared to try to handle those as we get those cases handed off by the District Attorney's Office. And I'm available for any questions that you might have about the program, whatever it might be.
This is Commissioner Portillo. Thank you so much for those presentations and for kind of the overview of the program. I want to make sure I'm just understanding what the goals are for the 18th, as well as kind of what the next steps are. So it sounds to me like on the 18th, the goal is to reintroduce restorative justice principles to our community and lay out what trainings may be available for community members to be a part of neighborhood accountability committees and potentially just to learn more about restorative justice. But any sort of actual mediation and leading that process with the District Attorney's Office would be happening with certified mediators?
That's correct. There is special training that one needs to go through, and it's, it's for the well-being of all persons. It, restorative justice done poorly has a great possibility of re-harming and making the case even worse. So we come as, as trained people to bring people, how to bring people together with sensitivity, with care. That's going to take some additional training. And to build, to really, the most successful community programs are supported by the community, actively supported. And so we want them to be not just watching us do it, but actually be directly involved. And the training that we'll be offering after the first year will provide those opportunities. But there are so many different levels of support from just recommending somebody to say, yeah, this would be great for you to, you know, be a participant. And I think you need to try it, or yes, we really buy into this program. And that's, that's the most support that they can give, and that's great. And some people may really truly be ready to say, I want to get trained. I'm willing to pay for training. I, I want to be an active part of this to see the benefit for the community. So the 18th will be just introduction for what we're trying to reintroduce into the community. And then at that time, we'll be starting to ascertain at what level of commitment people may see themselves when we do the separate breakout circles.
Thank you. Additional questions?
Um, Lyle and Lisa, thanks for your presentation today. I really appreciate it. Suzanne, thank you as well. Can you give us a little bit more in these other communities where you're doing this work, what that structure looks like as you work in other judicial systems in other counties?
So I'm most familiar with my work as being on staff at the Center for Conflict Resolution, and some others can speak to that as well in other counties. And, and Kansas City metro area, the District Attorneys oftentimes, particularly if it's a, a lower-level crime, they will immediately contact the Center for Conflict Resolution and say, here's a case. The, the person who we are potentially going to charge has certain amount of time to contact you. And once they do that, we sit down with the actual person and find out what, what harm they did, who was involved, and then bring them together. But so it's, it's at the initiative of the District Attorney sending, sending us those cases. And then in victim offender, Nancy, you want to come up and share with what, can you share what you do in Shawnee County with victim offender?
I'm Nancy Kelly. I work at the Topeka Center for Peace and Justice, and I do victim offender mediations with juveniles. Most of them are referred to us through court services officers. And it's after they've already have, have a diversion, and generally, it's part of their diversion. We're trying to change that so that it comes before. It's easier to get kids to change if you don't put all of the, the stress of what they're going through. So also, I work with the Topeka School Systems and other outlines, districts, schools. Excuse me. And in that case, I work with, with the administration and the faculty in training teachers to use restorative practices. And I conduct Level Three Restorative Practice Circles for kids who are re-entering after they've committed some kind of harm.
Did that answer what you needed? Okay, great.
Well, this is Commissioner Portillo. I guess I have a follow-up question to that, and this is probably for our District Attorney. I appreciate the idea of let's pilot this potentially with juveniles. How do you see this process working? Would it be kind of with diversion as Shawnee County is using this? Would it be before that and really thinking about that charging decision? How do you envision this pilot rolling out?
I would, excuse me, we're still working out the details of how we're going to put this together, but I think it would benefit our community to do it pre-anything so that there is no imprint on that juvenile. So if we can make that work, which I, referring over here to my deputy, who is actually the meat and potatoes of, he knows the meat and potatoes of all, that's possible, isn't it? Josh? It is. Yeah, we've talked about it. I just wanted to make sure I got the, yeah. So with the, with juveniles, because of the juvenile procedure and, and when we do charging in that space, we have a lot more flexibility in terms of time and we're not pressured to make some charging decisions. So I think that's why we want to start in that space, and we can do it pre-charging. And our community is small enough, and that's another, I think, silver lining with what, for trying this because our community is small enough and we're, I'll tell you, in 11 months, I've gotten to know our community fairly well and what we're dealing with in terms of issues and, and concerns. And I think that it's very, very possible. And certainly, that's our goal to do a pre-charging so that if we can resolve these issues before charging, I'm not sure if Lyle high-pointed, highlighted this, but the statistics show that recidivism is just much lower. And so we just, we make an impact on those young people. And, and then they, they hopefully will never become part of the system ever as adults or again. So real quickly, in case I don't get to say thank you to Sarah Plonsky, she, we, we, I talked to her about this coming together and trying to move this forward fairly quickly. She came to a meeting, heard us out, gave us some tips, and said that we should come before you so that you could hear what we were thinking about. And so we, that idea had not even occurred to me. So thank you, Sarah, for arranging our meeting with you, and that was very informative. So it gave us a very good sense of kind of your interest and certainly how a process would work with, with getting, getting your input. And, and I guess thumbs up if that, that makes sense.
So if I could add a few process conversations around that, I, what I, this is really a chance to just reintroduce the topic again to the county as a whole to promote the event happening on the 18th and talk about what is planned. Obviously, a scope of services, a memorandum of understanding would have to be eventually developed between the DA's office in terms of those, what would, how, what the processes, procedures and protocols would be, and Building Peace. We did speak about that, generally, I get calls when eventually somebody needs some money, that eventually this would result in a cost. That then through that process, Building Peace would move through our community partner process in, in, like, in concert or with the DA's office to be, to be considered as a part of our 2023 budget. So this is really laying the founding, foundation and the groundwork for some of those conversations that we'd be having in the next several months.
This is Commissioner Portillo. So just so that I'm clear, I recognize that our budget process would be for the 2023 budget year. Would there be any piloting of this in 2022 prior to that? Or would this not start until 2023? I guess I'm not.
I would say the timing of, like, when it could start would be up to the DA's office and Building Peace. Obviously, in our budget process, depending on the dollar amount, sometimes we have some flexibility to start things early. But obviously, there's no set timeline, I think, developed yet in terms of an actual start date, and there's no funding request immediately in front of us as to how to develop that. So I think those are things yet to be determined, and, but we would have some potential to start early if that is the will of the District Attorney and the Commission.
Great. Thank you.
We are a 501(c)(3). We have applied for a 501(c)(3 and have no doubt that we're going to get it, but because of the backlog of cases, we filed clear back in March and continue to get delayed. But we're anticipating, we do have a fiduciary agent that will back us in any grants that we're going to be applying for as well to our support. And so, and, and even there, we're anticipating that even on the community accountability cases, that there will be some charge that the person who goes through that is going to have to make, based on a sliding scale, a salary scale, to help them have some investment in participating in, in a process, a restorative practice process. So, but it's not going to cover, you know, all costs. But we're going to be looking for other grant sources. Having a grant writer on our staff has really been important, will be important to us. And any other funding that can come will just help support and build the, the true community base for what we're looking for.
Excuse me. Hi, this is Commissioner Reed. Thank you all for this. I am a, I'm a big fan of restorative, restorative justice and transformative justice practices. And so I'm happy that this conversation is being reintroduced and excited to see what the community input is. And I realize lots of things are still sort of in formation. But one question I had was, we've talked a lot about, and it sounds like a lot of the experience of some of the mediators currently involved lie in juvenile justice case, which makes total sense to me. And I appreciate that that is an excellent starting place. I am curious if there have been any conversations yet with the agencies locally that provide services to juveniles that are within the system. So specifically, I'm thinking about what recently merged Children's Shelter Inc. and O'Connell Youth Ranch, children shelters specifically because I know that they've had some staff training that they did with, as at the Willow, Domestic Violence Center around restorative justice practices and trauma-informed practices. So I was curious if there's been any conversations begun yet with some of the services, working with juveniles, both in and outside of the system. Sounds like maybe there is because there's some school district connections that have been happening. There's some work in the. have been happening, or some work in the Lawrence School District anyway. And then I guess the follow-up question to that is, and this is a bit more long-term, if we're thinking about non-juvenile cases, the involvement of other victim service agencies in the community. So I work at the Domestic Violence Center, some very particular, as a particular cases, which restorative justice practices I think are even more nuanced. So that's just an example, but also has a lot of potential for, for power. And there are lots of community models that are proven that. So I guess that's a bit of a comment for future endeavors, you know, that those victim services be a part of the conversation. But if any, any work is being done with Children's Shelter Inc. or O'Connell Youth Ranch, or maybe other services that are escaping me, I'd love to hear about that. Or if any of the mediators here have experience with any of those agencies through some of the previous local work.
Part of that, but I, I worked for several years with, oh, I'm sorry, Dave Mathis. Okay, I'll get right in front of it here. I worked with Harvey County Fender Victim Ministries that worked, there was a working relationship with the Harvey County District Attorney there in which they would refer selected juvenile offenders for pre-sentencing diversion. And it proved to be very effective. In fact, I worked as a volunteer before I became a mediator, and it was actually that experience that, that actually made me want to go back to school after retiring and, and get training in mediation. And I have just one sort of anecdotal example that I've thought about, if that's what you're sort of asking about. There were, there was a couple of 15-year-old boys that, for no reason, apparently, went into a local strip mall on the edge of town in Newton and one night, and after, after hours, and broke into the office and threw, just destroyed the office. And then went around and, and tipped over planters with flowers in them, quite a bit of damage. And we were given this case by the county attorney, and we determined the Neighborhood Accountability Board would be the best way to resolve that. And we had a mall manager that was as angry as any victim I've ever seen come in, and we had the two boys. And it was an opportunity for the mall manager to look these boys right in the eyes with, with their parents there and talk about the, the monetary and the intangible cost related to, to the cleanup and getting, and lost revenue opportunities for the mall to get some of it cleaned up. By the time it was over and there was, and they, and was really an opportunity to speak to the boys about it in a way they could hear it, as, as I was a facilitator, but the board members were able to ask probing questions, open-ended questions that could get these boys to begin thinking about what they'd done. At the end of this process, there was a, there was, the mall manager, as they sought to resolve and, and find an agreement to pay back for the expenses, ended up offering the boys a job at the mall for barter to do this. And it's not something we would have expected at the very beginning because there was so much anger and hostility, but it's, and that's, not all of these stories end that nicely, but, but the fact is that if you can get the victim and offender to really hear each other in a situation like that, and, and my colleague Nancy, I love a word you use, she, she calls this an interruption for the youth's activities. Anytime we're able to get in there, even though it's, it may not be as clear as we'd like it to be at the end, we feel like we've interrupted the process of the trajectory they may be on. Is that helpful?
So we have not worked with any, right now, we're only working, we've had contact with Burt Nash about support that they might be able to give, particularly if there are family issues involved that have involved mental health issues. We want to be a hub to draw local community support, a place to tie all those areas together. So we are very open to that. Right now, nothing has happened but anticipate in the future.
Maybe while you're coming to the microphone, we, can we stop the screen share?
Yep, I was going to do that right now. Someone asked for us to stop share. How's that? Is that better?
Great, thank you.
Okay, yeah. So I was just reminded that our enhanced diversions, applications, and even our diversion programs, we can include restorative justice and can easily incorporate it into those alternatives as well for just about any other case that may be appropriate. So we've got a built-in way to do it, and it just escaped me. We, I've been so hyper-focused on juveniles because that's really where all my hope is these days, sometimes it seems. And I don't mean that in a bad way, but I, I think that's really where we have some low-hanging fruit. But honestly, with our diversion programs, or excuse me, yeah, diversion programs that we, our existing diversion programs that we have, I think we can fit it in. So again, I think we're going to use the November 18th community, you know, virtual community program, again, just to reintroduce it. And really, I think, stress that now we've got a grassroots community program here with folks who are really invested in our community to facilitate and help train those who want to be a part of, of restorative justice, gauge interest, get ideas about other areas where we can use the practices, certainly, and, and hear what, what folks have to say and then move forward. So.
Anything else? Thank you again for this opportunity to share with you and, and bring in you as partners to see this develop. Thank you.
Thank you all. We really appreciate the presentations and look forward to the event on November 18th. If we have nothing else, we will recess till, till our business meeting at 5:30.